Now I can go? Thank you, Jeff. All right. Good evening, everybody. It was called this meeting to order. Want to introduce a couple of people. First, I want to thank State Representative Bill Romer for being with us tonight. Here's Mr. Romer. All right. And we also have Mary Schultz with us. Thank you for coming, Mary. Appreciate you guys. This is a great night as we introduce our newest board member. I want to thank Adam Toehl for joining us. All right. And now we begin.
Just the three of us?
Just the three. Well, well, machine.
Before we do this, I just want to make just a couple of comments. I'm not going to take my full 20 minutes, I promise. But we have Mary Schultz here, a former schoolteacher for many, many years. So, thank you so much for coming. But the folks here are making a sacrifice to be able to do this. I served for three years on the Summit Education Service Center Board of Governors. My wife currently serves, has been serving for two years. You don't do it for the money. You don't do it for the fame. You do it because you want to give back to the community. And that's what these gentlemen, that's what everybody that serves on this board is doing. So, I just want to say thank you so much for doing that. It's very important what you're doing. You're the closest to the parents, to the students, to the teachers, to the administration. And I know it's a tough job, and I'm so glad that there are people like you that do it. So, thank you. Good night. If you'd like to swear again.
Absolutely, yeah.
You got one of your glasses here. Now, if everybody raised their right hand. And do you, and then state your name.
I have no, I didn't give them first.
Solemnly swear that you will support.
Solemnly support. I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge your duties as board member.
Discharge my duties as board member.
In and for said Northwest School District.
In Northwest.
Local School District.
In and for Northwest Local School District.
Stark County, Ohio.
Stark County, Ohio.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance with the laws.
And in accordance with the laws.
Now in effect and hereafter.
Now in effect and hereafter.
To be enacted during your continuance in said office.
To be enacted in my continuance in said office.
And until your successor is chosen and qualified.
Until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mary. Gentlemen, thanks once again to Mary. Thanks for coming tonight. Mr. Romer, thank you once again. Appreciate it. Okay, we are, who is to be the temporary chairperson for this evening?
Would you like to stand and say the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, and liberating, and just.
Thank you all. Roll call. Mrs. Barkley?
Here.
Mr. Colliani? Here. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Here.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Here.
Mr. Toehl?
Here.
I'd like to accept nomination to the office of president.
The nominee is Mr. Gammelberger. Second.
Have any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Colliani.
Is there a second?
Second. Please.
I nominate him. Support the nominee. Victor Berg. Uh, two candidates we cannot have. Well, thank you very much. Roll call. Yeah, present. For Jim Bullock. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
All right. Need a motion for office of president nomination for vice president?
Nominate Colliani. Second.
What else? Let's now close the nomination, please. All right. Need a motion to close the nominations, over?
Close.
Mr. Colliani?
I'm staying.
This is the closing nomination.
Well, sorry.
Yes. No, no problem. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Toehl?
Yes.
Park? Yes.
Now we're going to vote on the vice here. Mr. Toehl? Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Colliani?
I'm staying.
Okay, thank you. Turn it over to you. All right. We need to set our regular board meeting date. Right now, we've been on the fourth Monday of every month. Is that still okay with everyone? Seven o'clock? Fine. We set that for 10 o'clock?
No, we set 12 o'clock.
12 o'clock, so any additions? Okay. All right. I'd like to, we get to number seven or number 12, sorry. Replace. Oh, replace. Where do we want to meet? Now, this work?
What I'd like to do, since we're focusing on different buildings and whatever we focus on that particular building, we have our board meeting just rotate where, wherever.
Yes, that's why, that's due.
Is that work?
Yeah, rotate to the different buildings.
Yeah, and then we celebrate any activity that's going on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just checking. Okay, sorry. Let's do number 12. Victor, are you okay? People who's a board member, I think we're also, we're also supposed to fight about the legislative liaison.
Oh, baby. No, I'm fine.
All right. And then, disappointment. And then, we talked about appointing student achievement liaison. That is not in this, not in. Rita, would you be interested in that?
Yes.
Former teacher. Student achievement liaison.
Can I add one to that, too?
Yes, okay.
This will be something new that we're going to have as part of our agenda each month. Student achievement report. Just celebrating the things that are happening in the district, whether it be scholarships or what have you, just different various things. But I did ask Grace, and she's got a background as an educator, if she'd be willing to report that part of the agenda, and she agreed, so appreciate that.
Thanks, Steve. I don't think we don't. There's the next. 13 through 21. There we go, that's why I asked. So, 13 through 21. You want to read back to the next.
Those are authorizations you give to the treasurer to, on an annual basis, so that we can carry out the duties, the daily duties of the treasurer's office. Like I said, this is just an annual action. It's day-to-day things. One thing that you've had questions on in the past, as I talked to Sean earlier, is you've asked, the very first one there states about setting a bond for the treasurer at $50,000. That is the low part, what treasurers at Stark County are bonded for. But again, the high point, the high mark is about $100,000. So, it goes, we're not out of the ballpark or anything, but you've asked that question in the past, like, but I would just address. The rest of these are all just daily activities. Is 50,000, would you rather have it at 100? I can 50,000, right, okay. Yes, please.
So, I need a motion on 13 through 21.
So, second.
I got a motion to second. Any question? Roll call. Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
And the rest. Through 30, 31. So, 22 through 31, all have to do with the superintendent. These are annual, once again, we have to do at this meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Rita. Questions now? Now, this is a bunch throwing you a one, sorry about that. Can they take the choice out? All right, roll call. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
And then 32 is obviously a representation, compensation for whatever may seem. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call. Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Call of favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. All right. We got to move right into the, our regular board meeting, the agenda. That is available. If you didn't get that. Already done the pledge of allegiance, something about amen. Any additions or deletions needed? Roll call. Miguel, have to do that? Uh, we need a, oh, God. We did. All right. Just for dinner. Recognition of visitors, would like to speak to any agenda-related items, if we have any? All right. Right off the bat, you're going to ask Rita to do a student achievement.
Well, I did talk to her about this. You ready, Rita? I did talk to her about this, that I would introduce, I should have waited until, till now, but this is another thing that we would like to keep, you know, celebrating the great things that are happening throughout the district to really push positivity. I think this would be a great opportunity to, to just talk about some of the achievement of our students, that's why we're all here. So, beyond all the activities that the principals are orchestrating within all the buildings, we can also have this, and Rita being a former educator, we thought that she would be a perfect fit, and she agreed, so thank you for doing that, and we will begin that at our next meeting.
Thank you, and Rita. All right, treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report. You received the minutes from the November 22nd meeting. I also am asking for an additional appropriation through the Stark County Auditor's Office. There's a resolution for the annual county alternative tax budget, resets our initial anticipated receipts. And then the last thing I'd like to ask you to approve is the board, the school district to join, you have school board association, legal assistance. Do you think that all, one if you want, or do the first three and then the last, however you prefer?
Let's do the first three and then the last one, because it's a little different. I need a motion for A, B, and C. Any questions?
And the reappraisal for the action on that has a much more effective.
The reappraisal came through, and we are going to get, the evaluation went up to over $400 million and everything, so, I mean, it was projected that the Stark County portion of our district would be increased something over 30%. It's over about 34%. So, that equals about $60 million in additional valuations.
Any other questions? Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
I need a motion to, for D, the legal assistance fund? Second. Any questions on that?
What does it consist of, I mean, providing people?
Yes, it's $250 a year. And so, they're available to us, to you upon call.
Any other questions? Thank you, Julie. Roll call. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Toehl?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
All right, Sean, turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll combine A, B, and C together for resignations. Recognition of accepted resignation of Alicia Albright, six-hour cook at Stinson Elementary affected, number 19. Recognition of accepted resignation of Justin Holliday, bus number 25, affected January 14. For appointments and assignments, we recommend for Liron or three-hour cook at West High School, affected January 3, 2022. For salary and opposition adjustments, Jane Jovino, that might look familiar, she's going from bus driver number 16 to bus driver number 25, replacement adjustment. Vicky Daddle, three-hour cook at West High School, six-hour assistant cook at Stinson. John Mariani, first shift custodian, after at West Middle School, first shift custodian at West Middle School. Tony Karstetter, second shift custodian at West High School, first shift custodian at West Middle School. Kristen Krista Kiefer, from Title 1, 200, to West Middle, to long-term permanent substitute at West Middle. And that's it.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
I wonder, for Kristen Kiefer?
Yes.
Title 1, a long-term substitute, could you shed any evidence? Title 1's better, right? Long-term substitute, is there a reason why she's switching? Do you know?
That I'm not aware of. I'm not sure why she's switched, but she'd like to do that.
We, we have a staff member who's out on the long-term illness, and she's certified in that area, so.
She's actually stopping in to help?
Yes.
Help us?
Any other?
We'll have.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We'll have to post that, we are posting that title to finish the year tomorrow, in the series, we can get someone in there.
That's all the time. Did you still have two Title 1?
We will, hopefully, we can get someone to fill it.
So, you have three, nobody?
We have a Title 1, we'll have a Title 1, and we still have two intervention specialist tutors that we've been trying to fill all year.
And she's certified, can you reach?
She, I have to look, but she has social studies. I believe she's 4'9", right?
4'9", social studies, later.
Thank you.
Can you see the, can you understand, can you hear there? As a long-term substitute? She's 4'9" certified, you can use her in different buildings.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could throw another, we're still working in a process of acquiring more subs. You know, we had it, we had it more approved in December to be able to, just for this year, we are working in a process to do that. We've got a couple things we're looking into, just, it takes time right now, and even if we get two or three people to be able to sub, that will be, that will be a bonus. It's been very, it's tough everywhere. We've had a difficult time finding subs, not just in the classroom, but such as the cooks, the bus drivers, custodians all over our district. So, I do give a lot of credit to our people for being able to juggle up people around. This is a reference that's in those. And it's not been easy, but we're making it, making it work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's probably a dumb question, but if we can handle those six-hour assistant book, or from a cook to assistant book, with no experience, so does that mean he had assistant book? So, he doesn't, none of the experience he has has.
That's great. It's a different position of service.
Okay.
Right, yes, yes.
I want to clarify that question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any others? Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Okay, next, with subcontractor recommended, the following person will be awarded, subcontractor for the 2022 school year. I want to get this last name right, I swear I don't, I haven't, but I'm going to try. Christopher Calai. Is he here? Come on, right?
Kalai. Kalai.
Kalai. He's actually been, he's a volunteer wrestling coach, he has been, but we wanted to make sure of those four groups that were on our list, is a volunteer wrestling coach, wrestling program, very well, by the way, with all these new folks there, we appreciate that.
Need a motion. Kurt, you want to do that?
Yeah, we do have the class by itself as well. We have Sanderberg, Cafeteria Playground, Margo, Krista, for transportation, they do those together, thank you.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Questions? Roll call. Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to section eight for the approval of the 2223 school calendar. And as you know, we looked at that in the previous board meeting, we also shared that with our unions, and very happy and excited, looking forward to the 2223 school year, but it is in your package.
Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? That's what we looked at last year.
We talked about, we discussed about the week, starting with school year, but later, but that, that came.
It is, I think it's later by, by day. I think I'd have to go back and look at the original calendar, but yeah, it's, we're with required hours and days that we have, we're pretty limited. The one big difference, there is some latitude, has been with spring break, with Christmas break, as well as Thanksgiving, and we were, we made that modification on Christmas break to give us a couple of days that you're ready to do the Christmas shopping thing, and then come back just after New Year's.
Any other questions? Is there a potential that still do the half starts for some of the classes that we did last year, for some, like, this is Tuesday, go to half Wednesday, and everybody on Thursday?
There's a very good chance that. We have been talking about doing that again. There was some benefit to that, I think, too.
Roll call. Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Mrs. Park?
Yes.
Mr. Toehl?
Yes.
Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mr. Gammelberger?
Yes.
Okay, for section, that would be none. For discussion, right now, in your package, you have all the policies that have been updated through state mandates. We tried to make it pretty clear, the changes that were coming, and you would be kind of agree through those, and then at our next board meeting, we would have discussion before we would be these new policies. Not new policies, changes to the existing policies.
Can you explain the format? Is it green underling?
It is. The green is the, I don't want to say the wrong thing, the green is the additional requirements that we've received. And my confidence to Kelly Garrett, she's the one who put all this together, she did a great job getting this running for us. Anything that's no longer relevant, as you can see, has been crossed out for red.
My question, how do you keep up with all, I mean, you're so much, Kelly.
Thankfully, I know, there is a lot. I've been, I've been reading, I thought, and, you know, maybe next month, we go through this, if you have questions on that, I've been reading through all these. A lot of them, a lot of them, thankfully, are just tweaks, it's not wholesale. There are some significant changes, like with, oh, which ones had significant changes? Like with teacher evaluations, things to that nature. There are some, some lengthy change that are, we'll be prepared to talk for about that next month, but other, others just have, you know, little phrases, little words, changes that will just help with the inventory.
Would it be beneficial to you, when you have a right, to send it to the board?
Yes, that, of course, that would help, and I'll spend maybe a week or two beforehand. I'll give you a call, just to see where you're at, if you have questions, but anything, if you want to simply email me those questions individually, and send those to me, then I think we'll get ready for that. I'll try to give you any answer, but we can also talk about that with all of us here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we need to move to an executive session?
Oh, we have one more thing, I'm sorry. We have, we had the core discussion for the next board meeting, we also have funding update. Deborah, would you care to speak on that?
Sure. As you know, we got American relief funding a couple of different times, and one of the requirements is to give you periodic updates. So, in the first six months that we got stuff, new additional funding in round three, which would have been July through about December, end of December, things that we focused in on, we used survey results that we had done just for the one needs plan that we had just finished in March. OD allowed that to be used as our input. We'll get additional input in the coming months, we'll put out another survey on the website, email families, because we have to do this every six months. These funds are here through the 2023-24 school year, have to be spent out by September 30th of 2024. So, there is a window of time to do that. So, we all met a couple of times, using all that survey data and outlined where we thought we were going to go. So, at the beginning of the year, one of the things we did, Mr. Toehl mentioned, we did the delayed and staggered start. While it didn't really affect funding, it was part of easing the kids back in, transition, getting them back in place. We are using some of the funding to further implement the PDIS pieces, really focusing on social, emotional, anything that's going on as the kids are transitioning back in, any needs, things like that. We did add two instructional coaches, one at the primary, one at the middle school. We attempted a third one at the high school, but weren't able to fill that, so that's on our radar for coming up for the upcoming school year. They're helping with educational strategies, helping coach the teachers, how to look at their data, and intervene on some of those learning gaps that our kids have from being in and out, and the remote impact, and the online impact. And then we also purchased Edgenuity and Acelis to continue with credit recovery, and that was really specifically towards high school and middle school kiddos who possibly got behind during the, during the pandemic and aren't on track for graduation. So, we're trying to make sure that we are providing ways for them to get their credits and their recovery, so they're back on track before they hit their senior year. That makes Mr. Tosh and the high school guidance department much happier if they're on track before the senior year. As we plan for the next six months, we're looking at what we're going to do for summer school. We have to do some things for third grade guarantee, even though the law just passed that we don't retain again, we still have to intervene. We're also looking at possibly some gap closing for the second graders coming into third, so we may offer some things there. Those were the kiddos that when they went online, in March of 20, they were kindergartners, which was a critical time that they went online. So, we're looking at summer school for them. We're having a conversation about. So we're looking at summer school for them, we're having a conversation about any high school credit recovery we need to do, any of those kids that are currently sophomores and juniors that we know aren't on track, how can we intervene this summer to make sure we get them, some of their credits recovered, and then we're looking at additional options as well at other grade levels. One of the other things we identified is, we have some Chromebooks that need, coming to end of life, that need to be replaced, and we had some other security upgrades and things like that, such as phone and security systems, so camera systems. So we're looking at all of that as we move forward, we'll survey on that, and, um, kind of look at what the expenditures are, are, there are certain parts that you have to fill in, such as social, emotional, some is for summer school, some is for this, um, technology pieces, so we're trying to balance that, but look at our needs, I don't know if you have additional questions, um, Dan and Steph have the budget that they have done, we put things in, like I said, facilities, instruction, safety, support services, so.
The two instructional coaches, and, and twenty twenty-four, for happens to their job, they then assimilated to the.
We graciously talked with, about this, and at that point, our goal was, we believed it would be impactful, and we believed that we could show the benefit of this over the two years, and what it does, and would like to continue, and if we continue, we will put those two additional in the general fund. And Dan, and now Steph, and I will track that as, as well as Mr. Raymond, to make sure that we're on track and that it's working.
Does that affect, you got to do that, does that affect bargaining contract?
We have instructional coaches in there, so I don't anticipate, but we'll see when we sit down with Regina if they have any concerns. We have moved them in, we haven't made a reduction, like, the person we moved over stayed where they were, they just took a different position, and we hired someone to fill where they were. We actually gained them individuals for them in the bargaining unit, so.
Dan, what, or Steph, either one, what, what's the dollar amount?
Ask her three, I'm over two point eight million, almost one point nine million dollars.
Yes.
Any other questions? Alright, we do need to move to an executive session, discuss the purchase or sale of property for public use, and then also Victor asked me about, uh, public employee, discussion, no decisions are gonna be made, correct? Need a motion? Mr. Colliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Parky?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerhardt?
Yes.
Toehill?
Yes.
Mr. Gimmelfurter?
Yes.
Lisa, we will have no discussion, I mean, no decision made afterwards.
Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to bring us back to general session at eight forty-nine. Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Victor? Julie? All in favor? Alright, thank you so much.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Don't forget, no J. D. or.